We'll call a meeting to order. Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we just wanted to say something new that we're doing starting this calendar year. We decided we were going to invite a student each board meeting to come in and they're going to cite the Pledge of Allegiance for us. So every board meeting will have a different student from a different school come in and get to participate in our board meetings. We thought it was a good way to kind of showcase some students and have them come in and see a little bit of a board meeting and stuff. So tonight we have Kylie Knight. She's a first grader at Otis. Her teacher is Ms. Wamas. And with her tonight are her grandparents Walter Thompson and Ashley Edwards. So with that, if we could all stand and Kylie is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Kylie. We have a water bottle. You can take that into school. So you can take that to school. And inside are some treats for you too. Thank you very much. All right, roll call please.
Mrs. Bloom here, Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Price, board members, if I could just interject into our meeting just for a moment. A superhero is defined as a character with extraordinary powers or abilities that are beyond those of ordinary people. If I ask any one of you what your superpower was, you would quickly state to me that no such thing existed and that you were an ordinary individual who happens to sit on the Board of Education for Fremont City Schools. However, we have the privilege of working closely with each of you. And we have been able to identify that each of you have the ability and regularly exert the power entrusted to you by your constituents to go above and beyond by serving the students and the staff of Fremont City Schools and the community of Fremont. On behalf of the entire Fremont City Schools community, it is my honor to bring you forward today and recognize you as the superheroes that you are. If you would please take a moment and step in front of the table. Thank you. We have some superheroes with us this evening. Each of them comes forward with a small token that represents the appreciation of all of us.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you maybe just have, hey guys, can you come back up real quick? Tommy, can you go back and stand by the lady that you gave it to? Can you guys just stand right in front of your board member that you gave the package to?
You must be Spider-Man.
Can you reach back a little bit?
You guys are some good looking superheroes.
Wonderful. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Thank you.
Need to put a costume on.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We are going to do our organizational meeting first. Before we get into our regular meeting, plus our tax budget. Also, so first order of business is nominations for president for this next calendar year. Do we have someone that someone wants to nominate?
I will nominate Mr. Tom Price.
Second.
We just nominate right now. Is there any other nominations for president?
Should we keep going across the board? Tom Price.
No, not yet. We're just taking nominations. All right. So if there's no other nominations, I need a motion to close the nominations for president.
Motion to close it.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Can I have a second to close?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call on the close of nominations for president, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved, nominations are closed. So we'll just go right down the line. All you do is state, obviously, who you want to vote for president. Mrs. Bloom.
Tom Price.
Ms. Lehman.
Tom Price.
Ms. Lewis.
Mr. Tom Price.
Mr. Nally.
I'm right.
Mr. Price will abstain from voting for himself. That seems a little weird to me, so. Okay, with that, Tom Price will be the president for this next calendar year. So Megan, if you can.
You would come up here?
Yeah.
Sure.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio? And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president of the Board of Education of the Fremont City School District, Sandusky County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Right, if you want to sign.
Okay, next, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for vice president, please.
I'll nominate Sarah Lewis.
Okay. Sarah's been nominated. Are there any other nominations for vice president? With that, could I have a motion to close the nominations for vice president?
Motion to close.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to, I'll just ask for your vote on vice presidency. Mrs. Bloom.
Sarah Price.
Oh my gosh.
For a mix. It's a cross.
Sarah Lewis. Oh my gosh.
Ms. Lehman.
Ms. Sarah Lewis.
Uh, Ms. Lewis.
I abstain.
Mr. Nally.
Sarah Lewis.
And I will vote for Sarah Lewis also. So therefore Sarah will be our vice president. If you'd like to go up to the podium, take the oath of office.
Raise your right hand. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio? And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as vice president of the Board of Education of the Fremont City School District, Sandusky County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
All right, I'll switch spots.
Okay, now Denise, if you want to go through, we're going to go through the other items that we have just for our organizational meeting here still, so. Go ahead Denise.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We'll begin with item number one, fixing the time and place of our meetings. And it's been agreed upon that we will continue with the second and fourth Mondays of the month at six o'clock here at FMS. And we'll make adjustments as we need to going forward. Item number two is the establishment of the service fund. This allows us to set some funds aside and set up a budget for board activities and to support our board members in the work that they do. So we will make sure and get that service fund set up as well. Moving on, for our board presidents and all of our discussions at our planning meeting, the following individuals have agreed to serve on the following committees. So item number three, the legislative liaison appointment. Mr. Nally, I have you for that. Are you okay with that? Thank you. Item number four is our delegate to the OSBA annual conference appointment. Ms. Lewis, that was I have for you?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Item number five is the alternate delegate to the OSBA annual conference. And Mr. Price, I have that for you?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number six is our student achievement liaison appointment. Ms. Lehman, it appears that you will be representing us with OSBA for that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number seven is the trustee for the Learning and Liberty Foundation for Fremont City Schools. And I have, Ms. Bloom, I have that for you?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number eight are the annual membership dues to OSBA. That's the Ohio School Board Association, which allows for a lot of information to the board members as well as to the administration for the district. And there's a lot of important information that we will see throughout the entire year with those meeting dues. Item nine brings us to some of our committee appointments. So first up, we have our treasures committee appointment, our finance committee. And I have Mr. Price and Mr. Nally for that.
Yes.
Item number 10 is our superintendent committees. And we begin with that with our policy committee. I have Mr. Nally and Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our curriculum quality control council, I have Ms. Lewis and Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And next up, we have our health and wellness committee. I have Ms. Lehman and Ms. Lewis. Wonderful, thank you. Item number 11 is our business advisory council, meeting dates and times. Just a reminder that that is a piece that is set into legislation that every local district across the state of Ohio must participate in a business advisory council. That used to be a local piece here in town. Those are now deemed to be more regional and ours goes through the North Point Educational Service Center. Item number 12 is the authorization that you would give me to act as a representative for all of our grants. That would be local, state and federal grants on behalf of the district. Item 13 is participating in state and federal programs. Those programs provide us with a lot of additional items to the students and staff of the district. And that's just a different revenue source that local funds don't have to be utilized for those things. That's a big plus. Item 14, you would be allowing the me to be the purchasing agent on behalf of the district. And item 15, you would be appointing the treasurer as the board's designee for any public records training that would come up. Item 16 is the authorization of, to the treasurer for the investment funds representing the board and following the legalities that are present. Item 17 are the requests, authorizing the request for any advanced tax advances through the county auditor. The treasurer will run point on that. Item 18 is an opportunity for us to have some petty cash funds on hand. Please note that that is an up to $7,000 and that is an annual, that's for an entire year. Primarily what you might see those dollars being utilized for within the buildings would, an example would be startup monies at a gate for an athletic event since they have to have a cash option for individuals that are coming to participate. Item number 19 is the authorization to issue any warrants to be given to the treasurer. Item number 20 is for the treasurer to pay any mileage to staff members that would accrue that. Item number 21 is the opportunity for the superintendent to hire staff in between board meetings. And I greatly appreciate that authorization. We try very hard to align to our, you know, our twice a month board meetings. But sometimes we end up in between. And it's important to be able to make sure that we are staffed appropriately as quickly as we can be. So I appreciate the authorization for that. Item number 22 is to continue with Booker Grayden to be retained as the board's legal counsel. And item 23 is the approval of Brinza McIntyre and Seed to be as additional legal counsel.
Can I get a motion to approve items one through 23, please? Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question about item 12, as far as grants are concerned. Any grants that we have for the district? You, you review and so there's no need to put you and a designee down?
Policy states that no grant may be written on behalf of the district without the superintendent being involved. So I think we would be okay with that.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to the tax budget hearing.
Okay. Good evening. The tax budget is something that I have to present annually. I presented to you all, you got to review it prior to this meeting and then I will submit it to the county auditor. It has to be done every year by January 20th. It's really just a tool for the county auditor to make sure that what they're collecting for us is appropriate so that, especially with our bonds, I have to say, okay, this is how much money I currently have in the accounts and this is what I need to pay those bond payments with. And they have to make sure that they can collect appropriately. There's a little bit of wiggle room every year in those rates. So she studies it and then we'll come back and say, okay, this is how much we'll do to make sure you have enough in collections. They're very conservative estimates. She's never done us wrong in that, so have complete faith in her in doing that. So do you have any questions on that budget?
That will come up later in the.
Yes, we will have it to approve in the regular board meeting.
So we don't need to, we don't need to have.
No, we don't need that roll call at the bottom.
Okay. Okay.
So this is just kind of going over that tax budget.
Okay.
That I will then submit to the auditor.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move into our regular meeting. Do we still have to have a roll call? Because we're moving into.
Yes.
Because that was in the organizational meeting. Okay. Roll call, please, for our regular meeting.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Excuse me, Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held December 16th? And also our meeting that we had January, December 16th of 2024? And then also January 6th of 2025, please.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to legislative report. Mr. Nally.
Yes. The governor, Governor Dewine signed quite a bit of legislation this past week. And a couple of the items that I wanted to mention. Number one, talks about the Department of Workforce, education and workforce to provide all schools with the best practice help to ensure the educational stability of students who are in the foster care program. And I wasn't real sure how how they provide the best practice. Will they submit a guide of some kind? Okay.
That would be my anticipation. There are, there's a monthly correspondence that comes out regarding assistance and tips for making sure that we're very aware of our students that would fall into that category. So maybe they'll just bridge into that.
Okay, thanks. The second one has to do with the signing the enactment of Parents' Bill of Rights. Would be for schools to adopt a policy on parental notification on student health and well-being. And there's some additional parts to that. So that was the second item. And then the third item was a a student from a public school for actions that endanger the health and safety of other students or school employees. What that is, is it gives the superintendent additional ability if there's after that 90 day period, if there's if they, if the superintendent puts in a 90 day suspension at the end of that 90 days, they can request further like testing. And depending, the superintendent can add an additional 90 days. And that's for if, if there's some real concerns about that student. The only thing that you know, it all makes sense. What, what they did not have on there was like an ending point. So the superintendent could, every 90 days, could extend that. And there's not a ending point. So I'm sure that that probably would end up going to the court or, you know, if, if there's some objection to that. How does that hit you, Sarah, coming from the juvenile detention?
Well, I think, I mean, I, I think it's important that the superintendents and the, the local authority have some the ability to assess a situation on a case by case basis. There are some situations or incidents that the way that things are written, it makes sense that this is the expulsion and this is how it's going to go and you serve the expulsion and that's the end of it. But there are other cases that I do think it's important for for us to, the superintendent and whoever you would deem appropriate in the situation to assess the child, the event and what, what is going on. But I, I do think that that control would lie within the district. I don't know what the language of the law says about involving the juvenile court, but I think if there were a situation that would rise to that level, then I would think that charges would be pursued at the beginning of the event and not at the end of this first 90 days and a second 90 days and go on and on and on. If there, if, if the the event in question or the incident that would cause the expulsion rose to the level of court involvement, I would just assume that would be done right on the, the front end. So there wouldn't be that continuation and waiting in the
Right.
in the wings.
And it all boils down to safety.
Absolutely. 100%, 100%. So I do feel like it's important that some of that local control is in place.
Thank you. The other thing, there's a new leadership in the Senate and in the House. And the thing that I think concerns a lot of people is some of the comments mostly from the from the Speaker of the House. What the concern is, is the fair school funding program that we, we've bought into has basically, when it was developed, had a six-year cycle. The first year with the funding, we received partial dollars. The second year, we, the second two years, we received full funding. The Speaker is kind of indicating that he doesn't believe that they need to stick to the third two years of the cycle. And he's, he's already made comments to propose cutting. I think it was $650 million from the public education program. And this is where it comes into talking a little bit about the vouchers again. I know I kind of kind of beat that dead horse, but an increase in funding. He's talked about a decrease in funding for our public schools. And then he's proposing or being, it's being proposed to add for over $4 million into the fiscal year 25 budget. So, you know, there's a lot of concern there. You know, it's a, it's a developing situation, but the, the question is, what is sustainable? Supposedly, everything was sustainable as, as a direction four years ago, or whenever it was established. But the concern is now that you know, we've got the two years to go. Why is that not able to continue? And a lot of that has to do with the fact that over $1 billion, $1 billion in public money is now going to kids in non-public schools. And so, you know, where, where we were told, don't worry about it. There's another pot of money they're going to use for that voucher system. Now we're starting to see where $1 billion is coming out of the dollars that should have been going to our public schools. And, you know, I'm, I'm understand where the public or people that are supportive of the voucher system are coming from. But it really boils down to, do we believe in our public school system? And from my perspective. And the bad thing is, is if this fair school funding program does not continue, what it does is push, push back on us as a board to go out to get more money. And where do we go for additional funding in the future is property tax. And we all know that that's not something that people are real excited about supporting. And so, again, my, my concern is, is you know, the, the cycle is there that it's just going to be very detrimental to our public school system. So those are comments that I, I had. If anybody has anything to offer, otherwise.
I, I do think it's neat. And by neat, I mean, not at all that in these, sometimes in the House bills, like how things get wrapped all up into one. So in this House Bill 206, and we're talking about having some local control over how to handle, you know, expulsion situations to create a safe environment for everybody, which we would definitely support. So when we're talking about expulsion procedures, school closures, things of that nature, power storing medications. And also school trust funding administration for $4.1 million. I think that's.
Say it.
Challenging. Obscene. It's, it's obscene. I, I, I don't, I don't see the parallels between all the things that are included in that particular bill. But again, not to just pick on that bill because clearly this isn't the only one. It's politics. It's a tactic, but this one in particular just is frustrating.
I think it's interesting. They always, they always say something is broke, but they never come up with a remedy to fix it. Well, the Fair School Funding Act is broke now after four years, so we need to fix it. Okay, what's the fix? Well, we don't really know. But it needs to be fixed because it's not fitting what some people want now is what it is. In the old school funding part of it, when they, before the fair school funding, it was such a hot mess. There was only the formula to figure out school funding. There was like two people in the United States that could actually figure it out because it was always broke. So they just kept adding more and more to it. But it never fixes the problem. Fix the problem.
Right.
Don't just keep doing something different. Fix the problem.
Right.
But yeah, it's just.
Well, whereas.
They defund like, remove like $6 million, but then reallocate for this. So I'm no mathematician. Two mil short on that. So I'm, I'm just saying.
And the only way I could say to possibly make up that money is everybody's real estate taxes and all that going up, the appraisals going up. Maybe they had a math thing behind all that, too. They don't. I went to that meeting and I don't have my notes with me the other month when they had it. And one of the people here on here was there talking and they're going to be raking a lot of money. And I know schools, the schools are getting a lot of money out of it now. Obviously, we don't, we don't have control over that. But I don't know if they have figures behind the scenes of how much the appraisals were going up and you know, how much extra money was going to be coming in or nobody knows.
They don't have a clue.
Well, I, I think that there, one of the equivalents there is when we look at the pipeline dollars. We looked at those, and I'm speaking for passports, where those were dollars that we didn't have in our pocket, so we didn't plan to spend it. Whereas I think on the Ohio Senate and the House and the governor, they've pretty much said at one point, we're going to spend all this money and keep everything going. And now they're saying maybe we shouldn't have, and there aren't those dollars to sustain our, our operation.
Because they took $1 billion and put it into the voucher program.
Just kidding.
I mean.
So far.
Right, so far. It's just going to go up. I, I mean, again, it says, I'm not, I'm not against voucher programs as long as the non-public schools have to abide by the same rules that public schools do. And that doesn't mean that they have to do everything that a public school has to do. Let's take some of the weight off the shoulders of the public school and get rid of some of the bureaucracy that's there. But if not, I mean, there's so many programs that a public school has to do that we're sending all this money to non-public schools. You know, we have the dyslexia program now at the elementary levels that every teacher has to evaluate every student in their classroom by law of the state. Now, is a non-public school doing that? I highly doubt it. I'm sure they didn't have to pay for that at all or spend the time to do that. Yet, public schools have to. So it just comes about, make it a fair playing field and I'm all for it. But until it's a fair playing field, sorry. But they've, since I've been on, this will be my ninth year on the board. The one thing I have learned is look, state government, I will just leave it at state government. They can say whatever they want to. They can say it's all about the kids. They are setting public schools up to fail. That's their goal, really. And there isn't anything that shows me anything different with common sense. Until somebody shows me something different, that's my, that's my view on state government. Yet they're supposed to be the ones creating the school system for our state students. So I'll get off my soapbox.
So stay tuned. It's a neat show.
Yeah. It's some sort of show.
So to conclude my report then. There's a couple of documents that I had sent to each of you and the superintendent heard. And so if anybody from the public was interested in reading this information, just to contact your office and.
Absolutely. Just have community reach out and, and my office is happy to provide those documents.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. No walk on items tonight?
No walk on items.
Okay. Moving on to the hearing of the public, if anyone would like to address the board, they can come up to the podium, please just state your name and address. If anyone would like to speak. Okay. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Price, board members. Again, I would just like to very sincerely thank you for all that you do for Ms. Parkhurst and myself, as well as all of the stakeholders of Fremont City Schools. I know that you give a lot of time and a lot of extras, and it is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. This month, we recently had, and at the end of December, we had our Curriculum Quality Control Committee that met. And I know that that work, I'm very, that work is very close to my, to my heart and my brain after sitting in the curriculum world for, for many, many years. But I know that Ms. Lewis is also, she was at that meeting, was part of that meeting. Would you like to share a little bit with the community?
Sure.
On that meet, and that, from that meeting?
Sure. Um, right now, we are currently in the process of reviewing K through five, the K through five ELA curriculum. So we have a deadline this week to get some thoughts gathered and then have a final decision, I think, by toward the end of the month. A good decision in place on how we're going to proceed with that curriculum. Also, the committee approved a request to alter the intro to engineering and design from a full year course to a semester course with some strong teacher input. And that course is supported with some career tech funds and also aligned to a graduation seal. So again, I can't say enough about the opportunities for education that our, our students have. This is probably one of the coolest perks of of the school board gig is to be able to be behind the scenes and see exactly what our students get to choose as far as curriculum and content is concerned. At the risk of sounding like a parent, my parents. School does not look like it did when, when I was in school. And I think that is awesome in a whole lot of ways. There's just a lot of opportunities. You know, for kids to, to take. So.
You are accurate. Well, thank you for sharing. I appreciate that. Mr. Price, if you're okay, I'll continue on.
Yes.
Item number one I bring before you this evening, the approval of donations. Once again, as always, we have some very generous community members. So beginning with Sarah Barth and ending with the pedo patch.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
Just a comment. With the donation to the Fremont, to the Middle School Media Center. Those dollars, when somebody makes a donation like that, those are additional to what is already budgeted for that department.
That is correct. And sometimes the donations that come in, and that, and that is a sizable donation from Janet Miles, who's very connected to the Fremont Middle School as well as the Media Center. And I think when she retired from us, left a big part of her heart right here in the building. And so we are greatly appreciative of that. Sometimes those donations that come in as a cash donation will include the wishes of the individual who's donating. And sometimes it's wide open with whatever is needed in that department. But yes, that is, those are dollars that would be in addition to whatever was budgeted at the start of the season.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Miss, Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number two is I would like you to consider the approval for the 2025, 2026 calendar. I did bring this before you last month at our meeting and indicated for you, we talked a little bit about that at the time. This has followed the process and the policy of the district. And according to the FEA negotiated agreement, that calendar committee met in October. We met again, leading up to December, when there was that vote that took place. And they ended up with two options, option A and option B. Our FEA union, their representation did choose option A as their primary vote. That's the one they like the most, but ultimately that is your decision of A or B. So if we could, if you would like to suggest one there, and then we could have a vote for your approval.
Well, I'll suggest that we don't go against what the teachers want. When I live with one and I would never hear the end of it, but I think that obviously it's up to the staff if that's majority wins, basically is how it works. So my recommendation would be that we put option A in there. Does everyone agree upon with that?
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll vote on option A.
Right.
As the calendar.
Wonderful.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
I had some, I had someone asked me a question. When a teacher workday falls like before or after a holiday, are the teachers actually in the buildings working or are they able to take off?
If it is a calendared workday, it is a calendared workday.
Okay. And the teachers chose to do that in some cases.
That is accurate.
Okay.
That is accurate.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number three, I have a list. And if you're okay, I would like to read each and every one of these names for item number three. I believe we have 11 this evening. These are individual Ross High School seniors who I present before you that have met all of the requirements necessary to graduate from Fremont Ross High School a semester early. So with your permission, I would ask you to consider the approval to grant a Ross High School diploma to the following students. Lorenzo Chihuahua, Imaja Elkins, Hayden Miley, Jace Lee, Mariah Papoka, Lorenzo Regus, Isaiah Rangel, Alexis Seaman, Aiden Thompson, Brianna Ross, and Amaya Shoman Williams.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item three, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion?
Congratulations to all you guys for your hard work and.
I did that when I was in high school, so.
Yeah. That's an accomplishment.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number four, I'd ask you to consider the approval of the resignation of Brandy Wadsworth. Item number five, we have the appointment of Catherine Road, who will be joining us as a three hour cook. Along with some support staff members, Jeffrey Carruthers, Emma Gross, Paul Lotteg and Carson Smith. Item number six, I would ask you to consider the approval of the supplemental, supplemental contracts, beginning with Cortland Andrews and running through Jennifer Ziegler Long. Those are all returning individuals to us, so we greatly appreciate them coming back to us for some more volunteering or coaching at paid position. Item number seven, once again, we have some additional coach positions in there, beginning with James Hilton and ending with Pride Yost. And none of those individuals are new to the roles that they are asking for in, with Fremont City Schools. Item number eight, we have some student teachers with BGSU. And item number nine, we have some student teacher mentors with Heidelberg University. And item number nine, we have some student teacher mentors with Heidelberg University. Um, again, those are individual teachers, staff that are supporting our novice incoming, hopefully new teachers that are coming with a breath, breath of fresh air and some excitement. But that leadership takes a lot of extra work on behalf of our teachers. So you see those two items, eight and nine. Um, item number 10, this is a student that is, uh, requesting to be a lifeguard for us. We're very happy with that employment.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve items four through 10, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion?
I do have a question real quick. Um, the difference between item eight and nine, as far as the, uh, A.
The dollar amount?
Yes.
It's determined by the university.
Okay. I, I kind of figured as much, but I just wanted to.
It may also be aligned, um, to the amount of work that the individual has to do. Maybe the number of hours that that student teacher has to complete.
Sure. Makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Item number 11, um, I asked that you consider the approval for the adoption of the resolution to, for that school board recognition month. As I stated earlier, there, there's a tremendous amount of work that you do, and you are greatly appreciated for the roles that you fill for us.
Can I get a motion to approve item 11, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Um, item number 12, you get to share this recognition month with our national mentoring month. Um, so I would ask that you consider the approval of adopting this resolution. Um, and just to provide you a little bit of information and the importance of mentoring in, within our district of Fremont City Schools. Um, we do an amazing job with our community, um, in volunteering to support our students. To date, we currently have 49 community members who are supporting Fremont Middle School students and 36 community members that are supporting Ross High School students. During this month, we currently have some billboards that are up around town. Um, hopefully engaging some new community members that may find interest in being one of these mentors. There is a process, and if anyone is interested in that, if in our community, I would ask that you would reach out to our wonderful advisor, Susan Fry. Um, she is housed at the high school and you can reach her through that high school building. If there is, um, a, a need in your heart, um, and your mind and your time and your schedule that you can give back to some of our students, or you're always welcome to call, a community member can call my office and we will make sure and get that, um, in the right place. So I ask that you consider approving the mentoring month resolution.
Can I get a motion to approve item 12, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Um, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to report of the treasure.
Good evening. Um, I'm just gonna echo what Mrs. Hurt said. Thank you, you all, um, for your leadership skills as board members. It's a very important job and I don't think everybody quite understands how much work and time you guys put into this. It may look sometimes like they're just sitting here approving stuff, but they put a lot of time and effort into being really good board members for our community. Um, in my office, we just wrapped up closing calendar year end, such a fun time. Everybody's looking forward to getting W2s soon and our vendors getting 1099s. Um, so we're getting those all wrapped up in, um, the office so that we can get those out to staff members as soon as possible. There's also some healthcare reporting that Marina and I get to work on. She's very excited. Um, always loves sitting next to me and working on those bigger projects. Um, and then.
Right.
Denise loves it too. She calls me down just so I can sit with her some days. And then with the new year, there's also some major payroll changes that come on with deductions to payroll. And then we also had some health insurance changes, so we're getting that all up and rolling for the year. And then I just had the one item for approval tonight that we kind of already went over that tax budget that we get to do every year. It's a fun little item.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item 13, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion?
Denise, I trust you put your eyeballs on this too, and this is kind of a.
I did.
A, a group, not a group effort, but a group effort.
A double check effort, definitely.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good team with those.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Uh, moving on to board member communications. Mrs. Bloom?
Um, I just wanna thank all the people for the donations. That was, uh, really nice, especially Janet Miles. That was a really sweet thing that she did. All those diplomas, congratulations to all of them who got out early. It's not easy thing to do. You have to have all your credits up and everything ready to roll. I mean, and if you don't have it, you're not gonna get it either way. And then all the volunteers and the coaches and the mentors, people that are stepping in to be with the kids and help them with their, um, studies and sports. And I seen the billboard, one of them, I see, I look up every time I go over the bridge, it's up on top of the building. So I seen that billboard. I seen it today and I looked at it twice. And the little one that did the pledge, she was so cute. Oh my gosh, she's cute. And all the little superheroes, that was, that was too cute. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Lehman?
Same was old Lori just saying Kylie, that little girl, she said, she wasn't nervous. She said she wasn't nervous and she was excited to get up here, so she did a great job. She led the group and, uh, we all got through it.
And you could hear her.
Yeah, you could hear her. She was very boisterous and she was.
Yep.
Very, a lot of self-esteem right there, just very powerful for her age. So, yeah, she's, she's gonna do good things. Um, the only other thing I'll say is you guys got this pod looking like winter and I love it. Um, I've, I've learned as I come here that these, seems like it's getting more decorated as the seasons go, but, uh, yeah, they took down all the gingerbread and now it's winter and snowflakes and blue lights and it just looks really, it's a good atmosphere for them, I'm sure, while they're at school and they've got the teachers' faces around and you guys did a great job. Whoever's listening to this that, uh, has a part of this.
I have to put in a plug only because my sister-in-law, Mrs. Cook, is one of the teachers in this pod.
Oh, yeah?
So of course, over the holidays, we have multiple times that we're getting together with family. And she will always ask me, so did you notice the pod all decorated? And I said, yes, you need to go back and listen. People commended you on, so. And she said, well, we wanted to keep a winter theme. She goes, just be prepared in January, the Christmas stuff will be down, but it'll still be wintery. And so.
It looks awesome.
It does.
She, she is a second grade teacher by heart for a lot, a lot of years and came up to eighth grade. So she still has that second grade mentality of, we're gonna decorate, so.
You gotta think the kids are gonna be here, the teachers are gonna be here. You want a great atmosphere to be in the middle of. And decorating is the most, one of the most tough things you can do to have that, so.
He said even as eighth graders, they love doing it, so. Yeah, they're still kids.
Yeah, heck yeah. That's all I got.
Taking pride in the building.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I had to say, Tanya and your wife are great teachers. My daughters had both of them, so.
Mm-hmm.
They're awesome teachers.
Good.
Despite you being their father.
Yes. Sarah?
Um, so speaking of great teachers, I just wanna give a shout out, um, to the teachers that we have on staff, um, out at the Juvenile Justice Center. They are Fremont City Schools, um, teachers. And sometimes, um, I, it's, the work that they do is just a little bit different than that of, um, a typical teacher in a classroom. So they can have kids in a classroom, um, of various grades, um, academic ability. Um, and they just do a great job of maintaining, um, the, the academic environment despite the environment that they're in. Um, and it is tough, um, to have to communicate with multiple different school systems um, and manage multiple children in those different school systems. And they, they do it with these. So Diana McNulty and Chad Long, um, I just wanna publicly thank them, um, for the job that they, they do. Um, congratulations to all the graduates. Um, it's a great time to be a little giant. Um, it always is, but our, um, winter sports teams are plugging along very well. Um, I think all of our programs are experiencing, um, winning seasons. Shout out to the boys' swimming and diving team. They brought home their second consecutive NLL championship, so that's pretty exciting. And I guess I, I saw today on Facebook, so I thought it would be worth a mention, um, that we're in need of some substitutes for a lot of different positions. Um, so if you are interested in being a substitute, um, not just teacher, but cooks and janitors and, and things of that nature, um, you can visit the district's website. And there's a, the spot for, um, if you click on employment opportunities, it'll lead you right to the link that was listed. And you can see what's available and if you qualify, um, and if you qualify, then apply.
Absolutely.
I just made that out. I just came right out.
Well, it's hard being last. Everybody's already said anything.
Actually, you're not last. I still have two, so, yeah. You're right, though.
Okay. Just, uh, the early grads, you know, I'm sure that it took a lot of, um, hard work through the course of the years to get ahead of, ahead of things with all the coursework. And so it's, it's something, hopefully it gets them a jump on college, a jump on, you know, the working world, you know, whatever their heart's desire. Denise, you mentioned earlier the business advisory. Is that something you can share a little bit more about in the future as to how that's going? And, you know, kind of what the direction of that group is?
Absolutely. I'll pull some things together and share that back with you.
That'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, board recognition, I, I appreciate that. I, um, you know, we have a great, you know, what makes it easy to serve is we have great community. We have great staff, great children. Um, things are just rolling along and, you know, again, with, with all that positivity, we still need to watch the budget and, um, wanting to do the things we're doing now in the future. And so it was really nice having the, the young superheroes here. And then I wanted to mention the OSBA, OSBA has a few trainings coming up. Uh, I think it'd be worthwhile to check some of those out. Uh, some are virtual. But, uh, I think those, those trainings are very good. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you to the mentors, um, for their recognition and all the time that they do, um, that they put in with our kids is to give those extra help to some of our students that needed. And, um, what a great resource that is. Um, congratulations to the early graduates, like everyone else has said, to put in that work and be able to get done. For whatever reason, they, they decided to do that, to move on to do whatever. That's great for them. Um, thank you to the superheroes and for our gifts. Um, that's always fun to be presented with something instead of us presenting some, not that I wanna, but, but to have superheroes come up, that's, that's fun. And to Kylie who came up, great job tonight, Kylie. Thank you for her and her grandparents that came with her to, to come out on a cold night to do the pledge of allegiance. I think that'll be fun to do each meeting, just to meet some of our students from all different grade levels and all different schools. So that'll be fun. Um, to piggyback off of Sarah, winter sports are doing good. Everybody seems to be doing good. I get to put my plug in. I have a mic, so I'm going to. Um, I'm assistant coach for the girls wrestling team. We have our big girls wrestling tournament this Saturday. Over 20 high school teams and over 20 middle school teams will be there. There'll probably be 250 or so lady wrestlers from all over the state of Ohio there. Um, if you're into wrestling, man, it's, it's fun. It is just so much fun to watch these girls go at it. Um, they just put everything out there on the mats. If you're new to it and have no idea, it's the fastest growing sport in the country right now between high school and college. Come on out. There will be a lot of wrestling. There's a lot of, there's a couple of state champs from last year that are coming. There's some state qualif, quite a few state qualifiers that will be there, so it's a lot of good wrestling. And I will put a plug in, if you would like to volunteer, we're still, we just had practice tonight before the board meeting. We're still missing a couple of volunteers. Um, they can get ahold of our head coach, Jen Long, who's a teacher at the high school. Um, we would be more than happy to have some volunteers for that, but good time to come out on a cold Saturday in January with nothing else to do. Um, come on out and you can be inside. It's at Ross High School. We'll have five mats going, so there's all kinds of wrestling.
What times start?
I believe wrestling starts at 10:00. Um, and it'll be, it's middle school and high school girls. It's all girls that day, so, um, it's fun. And it's, it's, it's a great time to support our students that are involved. We have between middle school and high school, 26, 28, somewhere in there. I, I, just under 30. Um, so we've got good sized teams and the girls are, they're ready. They can't wait to have a home, big home tournament and they're putting in the work, so. With that, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session under item B, as in boy. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? The only thing I would say to the public is there will be no business, um, held after our executive session. Once we, once we come out of executive session, we will be adjourning immediately. So there is no more business to be taken care of after that, so. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
All right, motions approved. We are now in executive session.